Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting of City Council for Wednesday, April 5, 2023. We have a meeting announcement and public comment announcement. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone, all the speakers, that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Threats in profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen?
Here. I honor my husband, through City of Pittsburgh, public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Opened deals in Bon Air. Made a deal to gain McKinley Park from us. Now we want a green space in place of the detrimental school building. Acquire Bon Air, tear it down, use Pittsburgh Trees and Parks tax money to make a green space. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air people. Without that, there is no valid governance. We, the people of Bon Air, welcome a green space to replace this detrimental building. After having three youths taken out of the building in Hancock's and four others fled, it shows the escalation of the problem there. This was read at my husband's. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects. It gave our firefighters safer, more efficient. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his retired career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy served our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Thank you, Doug Praskovich. The opportunity is here and now to create a green space by contenting and tearing down the detrimental building that has caused a threat to the peace, safety, Bon Air community. Join our supporters, Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham, for the creation of a green space. The Memorial Green Space is the solution. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Chad R. Wise. Chad online? In the audience? Hi. Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmembers, my name is Chad Wise. I represent Steel Stra. It's the Steel City Short-Term Rental Alliance. For those of you who aren't familiar, we're a collection of hosts and local businesses that encourage responsible short-term rentals, and we want to see them thrive in Pittsburgh. We help provide information and education to hosts in the city and surrounding areas. Collectively, our hosts generate over $50 million in accommodation revenue that by and large stays right here in our community. We also have an ecosystem around maintenance cleaners, people build gift baskets for our guests, et cetera. These people also contribute significant additional revenue to local economies via the bars, restaurants, entertainment venues, et cetera. Our hosts are taxpayers. We pay a 14% hotel tax that's automatically collected and remitted via major channels such as Verbo and Airbnb. Mostly here today just to remind you all that we exist as an organization and we're here to help. There's a lot of information out there about short-term rentals and, in some cases, misinformation about what we do and how we do it as conscientious hosts. We can be a data source for you. We can help you understand the industry. We can help answer any questions you may have about what hosting entails. And importantly, we provide a consolidated voice on behalf of our local hosts. You know, most hosts in the city, they only have a single rental. They rely on this additional income provided by sharing their homes to help pay bills in this era of high inflation. The concern is that new regulation can be voted on and passed without the collective input of the local hosts. So we're here to ask for your engagement as we work to develop future legislation, both as it relates to the current bill and licensing as well as future bills yet to be announced. Thanks.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Puma Chakma Mom Yahali Yi. He. She's not online. Okay. And the next registered speaker is Ikana Helmckina.
Greetings and good day.
Good morning.
In lakay alakain. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Okay. Greetings. Greetings and good day to all. In the days and weeks and months to come, you will have the opportunity to review legislation being proposed by the City of Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission. On behalf of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, you will each have the distinguished honorable opportunity to clear a pathway for Indigenous people of America, to make space for Aboriginal Indigenous people, who have been the most marginalized, miseducated, underserved, overlooked people in America. Our communities have been decimated by the ill-conceived policies rooted in colonization. The voices of my ancestors silenced by fear. Fear of death. Fear of being forcibly assimilated. Fear of the Indian Scout Act, to which we would not even identify as being Indian or Indigenous people of America. My mother, the voice of my grandmother, the voice of my aunt, the voice of my uncle, the voice of my grandpa, my cousins, and even close friends, we all agree that we won't be silenced anymore. Do what is honorable and do not impede on our progress. We want fairness in housing, education, medical, economic development, and cultural representation to repair our wounded community. For we are one people, many nations. We are the roots and the food, the onkway homway, and we are here to stand. Thank you for your time. May peace reside with you always. In lakay alakain.
Thank you. Have a good day. And our next registered speaker is Bill Schlachter. Bill? Is online? Is he online? Yes.
Hi. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I appreciate your time to speak with you this morning regarding the Airbnb or short-term rental. I was listening to earlier remarks and found it quite interesting that the individual who was speaking to you is principally located in Denver, Colorado, but representing Steel City. The goal of a lot of these corporations is to invest money into buying up properties in the community and not really being located here in the community and helping the community in that way. If you recall back when the very, very unfortunate act happened almost a year ago on the north side, that individual who owned the property did not reside in the city of Pittsburgh. And currently, the bill in front of you allows for people to own short-term rentals who do not reside in the city of Pittsburgh, or rather, a little more broadly, in Allegheny County. And more interestingly, I heard the term hotel tax used. Hotels are an interesting concept here because if you look at some of the properties owned by Steel City members, you'll see that some of them own large properties that have multi-units in it. And when you stack them with short-term rentals, isn't that just a hotel? For example, on Grandview Avenue, hotels were not allowed. And that was a battle, as you may remember, Teresa, that was long fought up here on Mount Washington, why they wouldn't allow it. But when you have multi-units that are just truly stacked with short-term rentals for Airbnb purposes, I mean, isn't that a hotel? I don't see what the difference is on that. And I think the goal needs to be clarified in its language around multi-units. And I would suggest, like cities like Denver, which some members of the Steel City may be familiar with, that they must have a primary residence to operate a short-term rental. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we are able to move the bill forward in a way that helps the community a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. And I've been lugging this stuff back and forth, and I'm going to try to go fast so you can see that I have been coming down here for years. But first, I wanted to start off with a book. This is Talk Magazine. It's a black magazine. This is in 2005. 2005. Look, Les Ledwig was running for mayor. Even Lamb, Lamb was running for mayor. Paduto looked like a young boy in these pictures. These are all old pictures. And I want to read something from the book so you understand why I'm talking to him. I want you to understand. But I wanted to say something to the man from Steel City. There's two other men sitting there that listen to the other man that's against them. And I said to him, don't you want to answer to him, man? He said, no. But I would like to answer them for you. When they had that party of what, over there on the north side, they were saying that them young kids was outside smoking weed and doing whatever, and the policeman was in the car watching. Then he left. Okay? We, as citizens, say, if that policeman had took and called the rest of them and they had arrested them ones out there smoking weed, it would have got in the building that the police were watching you. But once they know they're sitting out there and they didn't even stop them, then another thing I have, I heard the mayor yesterday on 90.5 at 9:00 in the morning. Okay? I couldn't hear it all because I'm taking my bath trying to get down here. But the mayor was saying about how they're going to get a new police officer within a couple of weeks. Well, Mayor, you're starting off wrong again. Mayor Paduto, when he said he was going to have the mayor, the new chief, come to every community, to talk to every community. When I came in here to City Council and Ms. Gross stood up and said, such a large community, we decided to put the Hill with Lawrenceville. We couldn't get over here. Two buses to go. We just could have had it here. Everybody could take one bus. Do you understand you favor Lawrenceville? And when you did that, there was a businessman, Dave, Dave Fields, that was selling cars down there. The police came and said, because they arrested Harper, who you got? Who you going to call? Who you going to call? They tasered the businessman in his business. They tasered him. Because he would call, because they was messing with him, he would call Harper. Harper said, leave him alone. Well, Harper was gone, and they came back and they showed him. Hey. And I'm saying Ms. Gross and the mayor is the reason why a black businessman got tasered in his own business. You know, he came into his business and tasered him? He was an elder. He was 50 something years old. He's on the floor. I saw it. I couldn't believe it. Dave Fields, Dave Fields, remember that name? He said he filed a lawsuit. And I told him, if he does, please, subpoena me.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers in the audience wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And we begin. We do have a registered speaker that's online now. If you don't mind, I'd like to hear from her as well. We have, come on. Puma Chakma Mom Yahala Yi.
Grand risings, everyone. And I just want to say, in lakay alakain, to everyone, and especially, in lakay alakain, delighting the honors, delighting you, to Teresa Kelsmith. I truly appreciate how you give great effort to pronounce my title, and you do so beautifully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to start today just by reminding everyone the obligations we all have to make a better future for our offspring. And I know you may refer to your offspring as true. And we also have similarities. And in those similarities, we want to see a peaceful environment for our babies. I do. I have beautiful grandbabies. I have three of them. And I wonder what the world will look like for them 20 years from now, you know? If I'm able to be here to see them reach that age, and if we're all able to see our grandbabies reach a specific age, that we would love to see what their brain operates like and what their hopes and their dreams and their visions are so we, as grandmoms, grandparents, granddads, can assist them and watch them shine and help them shine. We can do that most effectively when we talk about food security and creating food forests because they truly, in evidentiary proof all over the globe, they last for hundreds of years. So it's a small startup in the beginning, right? And it's easy to do. And we are most knowledgeable. This is my life's work. And I am here to offer this solution, this long-term solution to City Council. When things come across your desk in the recent days to come, be mindful. We're not just creating temporary solutions. We're creating permanent solutions. And I look forward to working with everyone in this food justice movement that I've also worked in for years, in a new light, in a new vision, in a new way that will sustain us all and our future generations. And I thank everyone for allowing these interactions to happen and for common ground to be made for all the people here in this territory, as we, the Aborigines, the Indigenous, have always saw our lands, beautiful landscapes. Let's repair them. Let's restore them. I yield.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too.
And that brings us to our Finance and Law Committee. Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have supplemental new papers. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1385, Resolution Ratifying the 2023-2025 Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One, Collective Bargaining Agreement.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I ask you to pull your microphone over? It's hard to hear you.
Yeah. Is that better?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you for letting me know. And so then we'll go on to, I'm sorry. We have to vote. Owen is...
Oh, I could say something.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, just to quickly, just for the public, just so that folks know that we, yeah, we, you know, we took a look at the agreement. We had an executive session, which was very informative. And just to sort of give, you know, a few details, I think it seems like a good agreement. I commend the administration and the FOP for coming to the agreement without having to go to arbitration, the result of which meant that council had to then vote on the approval of the agreement, which is what we're talking about now. And just a few things, and this will be reported, I'm sure, but that there is a discipline matrix in the agreement, which is something that is new, that we haven't seen before, which hopefully will have the effect, my understanding is that that will have the effect of sort of standardizing disciplinary procedures, you know, so that, you know, all officers are sort of treated the same in terms of discipline and that the contract will be the source, you know, sort of the deciding point on what should happen in terms of discipline. Also, there are some salary increases, which I think are warranted, especially when we look at some of our other public safety resources.
Councilwoman, could you please pull your microphone closer?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
It's so hard to hear. Thank you.
And then also another point, which I think is good, is that there is some reorganization of the vacation and time off schedules so that we, again, this is my understanding. I don't want to, you know, but so that to both try and minimize overtime, which is good for the taxpayer because, you know, that minimizes the overtime pay and is also takes some of that burden off of our younger officers who have families and such and for which the overtime work can really be a hardship, right? So those are very positive things, at least that I saw coming out of this contract. So I thought that was worth mentioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Councilwoman Coghill?
I'm sorry. Also, Madam President, I'll wait.
Okay. He said, Councilwoman Coghill, yield. He said you can go. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I am in Legistar on my computer screen while I'm talking to you, and I don't see the agreement attached. Do you all have it there in hard copy? So the resolution says that after having been read, received, and filed, be attached to this resolution as an exhibit. Are we going to attach it at final date on Tuesday to be in the record? Because the hyperlinks in Legistar do not have the agreement.
Councilwoman, Director Pollack's here. Do you mind if he comes to the table?
Certainly. Thank you.
Good morning. Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Councilwoman Gross, the final agreement will likely not be complete for several months, as is typical in these processes. The negotiations result in a tentative agreement, which is what the council executive session yesterday was to discuss and consider. That tentative agreement is the basis for signing of a contract in its principal terms to go into effect, but the process in nearly all of our collective bargaining agreements to actually move line by line through the changes in an extensive document takes a great deal of time after a tentative agreement is reached. So the resolution that is before council today and was discussed with council last week is to ratify the broad terms of the agreement, as you were briefed on yesterday, and for the final agreement, once fully prepared, which will be several months from now, to be attached to it retroactively after it's been read, received, and filed in the future when the complete agreement is prepared.
That is not my understanding of the discussions that council had with our solicitors. I argued and continue to argue that council does have power over voting contracts up or down. And I understood that we were voting this contract up or down with this resolution. So just for the record, that means that we are still just kind of giving preliminary authority. This resolution, then, as you portray it now, if this were only just ratifying a tentative agreement, then we have, we are not voting the police contract up or down. So I think, I just want members to understand that because I did not understand that from our executive sessions. I think I see Dan Friedson moving to the table.
I...
Mr. Friedson, would you like to, I'd like to bring Mr. Friedson to the table.
He's here. He's here. Councilwoman.
Okay. So, Mr. Friedson, can you identify yourself for us?
Good morning. Daniel Friedson, Solicitor to City Council.
Mr. Friedson, do you remember that I asserted that council does have the authority to vote contracts up or down, and that I was concerned that in, especially in important contracts, that we assert that right?
Yes. I do recall that, and that is what's in the Home Rule Charter.
Right. So, again, I just want to say for the record and say publicly and for my colleagues that we do have the authority to vote contracts up or down. And that is not what this resolution is. So just for clarity's sake. We'll see if anyone else has comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I think we could attach the entire contract if we wanted to. We have totally now, if you don't feel comfortable voting, as it is. But I was just saying that Solicitor Friedson, you told me that the administration has 70 days according to Act 111, correct?
Correct.
To do so. So I want to be clear what our responsibilities are here.
Today, you can vote up the tentative agreement that was presented to you if it makes you all...
What she's saying, it's not a tentative agreement attached is what she's saying.
Right. It makes you all more comfortable. I see no reason to not attach the tentative agreement that we went over yesterday to this resolution, which would give the 30-day approval that we need under Act 111. But also, under Act 111, the negotiator has 70 days to get that full and final, all redlined and every line changed to, so that's maybe not several months, but, you know, 70 days from agreement.
Say anything?
No, just, yeah, 70 days is the more accurate characterization. I said several months sort of formally, but I agree with that.
I mean, seeing what we saw yesterday, I feel comfortable moving forward today. Councilwoman, if you want to abstain, you can abstain, or we can address the...
I have fully in favor of voting the tentative agreement up, but I just want it to be clear for the record and for colleagues that we not, you know, we discussed that council has the power to vote final contracts up or down. And so if this is not final, then we also should have into the record and an opportunity to vote, if we choose, on the final version of the police contract.
That will come to us, correct?
Under the resolution before you, it would come as read, received, and filed.
Yes. So it will come, and we'll have a chance to make a motion to read, receive, and file. Are you comfortable with that?
It's not the same thing as voting it down.
I know. Were you comfortable with that? No?
But we can actually debate that another day, right? We can vote this tentatively today without holding up any...
Right. And then we'll work through the concerns because I want to make sure everyone's comfortable, and I want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and I want to make sure the council's respected in our role as well. So with that said, I will work with you to get to where you feel comfortable, to where most of the members feel comfortable. Councilwoman?
Yeah. I mean, just with that, too, and I assume that throughout that process, should there be any significant changes, which none of us anticipate, right? But should there be, that that would...
I apologize, my respondent. Yeah. The process of incorporating the changes that are agreed to in the tentative agreement into the formal contract is all that occurs in that period. Substantive terms cannot and do not change in that time.
Any further questions, Councilwoman? Actually froze. How convenient. Any further questions?
I'm not frozen. I'm not frozen.
Okay.
Exactly. So, no, thank you. Well, I'm comfortable voting tentatively today, but I just wanted to be clear with everyone in the public that, you know, we not portray this as our approval of the final contract.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. And we'll work with you to get to a place where we feel more comfortable. I agree that we should see and have it attached. I thought that's what we agreed to when we met. Madam Clerk, have we ever had one attached before?
No.
Okay. But we've never had one that we've had to vote on. First, let me say, congratulations to the administration for being able to settle this contract without going to arbitration. I just want to thank you for that. I, you know, want to make sure that all of our employees feel valued and are paid as the best we can, given the fact that we are paying them with public dollars, and that we want to make sure we avoid Act 47 again. we want to make sure we avoid Act 47 again. So with that said, I want to thank you for getting to a place where our police officers feel a little more valued, hopefully, through the funding and through their pay increases. I think there's more to make them feel valued, other than the dollars that they're receiving. And I think that will come with the selection of a chief of police to show them some direction you're intending to go. But with that said, I'm going to make sure I mention that the part of having the discipline matrix included in the contract is something that, discipline's always been part of management, not part of a contract, and it still is. They'll still have the right to, under Act 111, to file grievances and do their proper, you know, procedures that they do when they feel that they've been unjustly disciplined or whatever. But I, but I think that management, it depends on who's the manager, who's the director, who's the chief, all that will matter on how this is all implemented. And so I want to, I want to make clear that there's, although it's great to see the pay increase, discipline is something that, even if you put it in here, the only thing that that might change is possibly, possibly an arbiter's decision, but that's about it, if it changes that. But I do want to thank you for, and I want to thank the FOP, because I think that they agree to a lot of these decisions. So I want to thank them, thank you both for working together for the betterment of the city. And with that said, we're going to take a vote. Yes, do you want to say anything?
Please. I was in line, I think you.
I apologize, no, I do.
It's okay, it's okay. You know, first and foremost, Deputy Mayor, I want to tell you how welcome this contract was for me. You know as well as I do, we've been talking about this for months and months and months. Not only does it allow us to be more competitive with the suburbs, which we so dearly needed, but what it says, most importantly, is the administration saying to our police forces that we respect you, we value you, and we'd like to pay you as much as the suburbs, and we're working our way towards that. So, so, again, I can't say enough about how welcoming this was to me and to the police force. I get a lot of feedback, you know, that everybody's happy, and to avoid arbitration was as much for morale than it was for anything. So, congratulations again, you know, in negotiating this contract and accepting it, it's going to go a long way, not only for morale, but in order to keep our officers here and being hired out from the suburbs. And, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman. If I could just emphasize a point that you made. The restructured pay schedule in this contract is intended to bring the salaries of folks at various stages in their career in policing in line with our region, so as to address the recruitment and retention efforts that you mentioned just now, and that you and others at this table have been rightfully concerned about inciting for a long time. It doesn't put us at the top of the pay scale, so there is still, of course, some room for friendly competition among neighbors around this issue, and I don't think that we'll ever fully, you know, address that, but I think that this contract goes a very long way in closing that gap and in not making it financially infeasible for a Pittsburgh police officer to remain with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, which was our goal. And like you, I appreciate the work of our negotiating team and the FOP's negotiating team in reaching that conclusion. I also think that the, the Council President mentioned the disciplinary matrix. It is, it is new to Pittsburgh, it is not new to Pennsylvania. The state police have had a very similar disciplinary matrix for a long time that has been very effective, again, for.
Pennsylvania.
The officers, the public, and the, and management in just making that process more transparent and efficient and direct. The state of Maryland has a similar one. So it's a concept that is, has wide acceptance in policing generally, and that is generally viewed as a way to protect everyone in that process. And so we're enthusiastic about that. I agree that it, that all of the protections and provisions of Act 111 remain, Madam President, so you're correct that it doesn't supersede, but it rather just aids and simplifies the disciplinary process. So, thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, truly, this is a big step, and it just emphasizes the importance of it. And I want to thank you for, whether it was the post-agenda I had, but coming and listening and taking all those facts and factoring them into, you know, negotiating with this contract. It's a win-win for everybody, and, you know, I personally, as a Public Safety Chair, really appreciate it. And I also want to point out, Madam President, and our Solicitor Dan Friedson, thank you for ensuring that we go by the letter of the law. You know, who knows what issues this could have caused had we not voted up or down. We're not accustomed to voting, you know, a deal made without arbitration, so, you know, it's really a first for us in a long time, I think, since I've been here, I would say, so. So it'll have my full support, and again, I want to thank you both for, you know, making sure we follow.
We call him.
Necessary procedures, and, yeah, I look forward to it. I can already see a difference in the morale of the police force, I will tell you, just men and women on the street who work, telling me daily, so, thanks.
We've heard similar feedback as well.
Thank you. Anything else from any other members? Okay, we'll take our preliminary vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is preliminary approved. Thank you both. The next bill, please, Madam Clerk.
Bill 1399, Resolution to Approve the Reporting Forms for Stop the Violence and Group Resolution Intervention, GVI, pursuant to Chapter 237.
Second, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Any discussion?
So, were the, are the questions that are attached to this, are these the final questions, or we're still working those out?
We're still working, well, these are the final for now, but we're going to work through some more, because what happened was, Ricky Moody had been so amazing, working with the administration on some of these questions, and trying to get some feedback from everyone, including yourself, and there were two different things. One was for GVI, which is what the administration more wanted, you know, was more agreeable to doing those, and the other one was for Stop the Violence, which is what I wanted. And so, in the absence of the conversation, my staff and the Solicitor put something together, so we'd have this in place. So in the end, I do want to say, so the public knows, there's always been some reporting mechanism placed. This is the annual reporting mechanism, so that we know what they've done with the money for the year. Even though we know what they're supposed to do, we want to make sure that those goals were accomplished. So just so the public knows that. And we will work with the administration going forward on a whole different reporting system, because I think we need to know in advance. But between now and next week, if you have some concerns, let's try to work together to address them.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Do you want to abstain, Councilwoman? No, you're okay, okay. The bill moves forward for preliminary approval. Thank you, everyone. And we have new papers, Madam Clerk.
Bill 1354, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Poise Foundation to Assist in Supporting Arts and Related Production Services for the 2023 and 2024 Western Pennsylvania Juneteenth Homecoming Celebrations, for some not to exceed $250,000 over two years in further payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say that this is also the same thing that the administration does for the Veterans, Veterans Day Parade?
July.
Fourth of July, sorry, Fourth of July. So they're doing this now for Juneteenth, so I want to thank the administration for working through this on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended. Thank you.
Bill 1355, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Chacote PC for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $6,662.50.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill's affirmatively recommended. Thank you. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
Bill 1356, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Marley Champion in the Amount of $2,750 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Parked Vehicle near 2414 Eckley Street from a City Environmental Services Vehicle on February 24, 2022.
Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended. Thank you.
Bill 1357, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Max Petrunia PC in the Amount of $225,000 in Settlement of Litigation Filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill 1358, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Beaver Avenue Esplanade by $250,000.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstent, any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill 1359, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing McFerran Street, Second Avenue Bridge by $87,400, Increasing Bridge Upgrades by $77,400, and Increasing Smithfield Street by $50,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill 1360, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from M. Mariserv of $5,000 to Purchase Smoke Detectors for Residents of the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill 1361, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through J, 5463 Broad Street, 0 Mountain Avenue, 0 Pliny Way, 540 Herschel Street, 916 Elkton Street, 228 Stanhope Street, 0 Redknapp Street, 608 Redknapp Street, 1551 Cler tonica Street, and 948 Gerder Street.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for this? Anyone in line to discuss? No one? Have a motion to hold.
Second.
And?
Do you have to make the motion?
No, can you make the?
Motion to hold for one week?
Yeah, just to get somebody to talk about this.
Yep.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill 1362, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through N, 0 Beethoven Street, 5140 Dresden Way, 5439 Black Street, 0 Apple Street, 7316 Hermitage Street, 7803 Frankstown Avenue, 368 Flowers Avenue, 372 Flowers Avenue, 955 Manton Way, 983 Industry Street, 96 Pasadena Street, 481 Belonda Street, 827 Suzman Street, and 3616 Granada Street.
Thank you, Kevin. Motion to approve. In a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, I wanted to say firstly about the treasure sales and the side yard sales, that I'm really glad that the administration has started, kind of like started the machinery back up and like moving these parcels, because I know during COVID and over the last three years or so, there really had been a slowdown, even a stop of moving of, especially treasure sales. And we've been tracking it in my office, kind of like how the volume of even, again, like no property reserve moved forward, no side yards, and treasure sales had really tapered off, and so I'm happy to see them move. But we found, there's a few here on this bill in my district that we haven't kind of ground-truthed yet, and so, and we'd seen some that we really had to do some checking on, and so I just encourage members and also community members to look at side yards. We had one where it was a parcel contiguous to a property owner, but then it was also another parcel contiguous to the adjacent parcel. And that's really not to the spirit of the law, right? And it's supposed to just be about you kind of adding a yard, that's why it's called side yard. And this was really ended up being more like a consolidation of parcels, which has a very different legal path. And so I had hoped to get to the couple in my district and haven't, and I wondered if members would be comfortable holding this bill also for a week, so we could just double-check.
Yes, Madam, or, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, we have to wait until one, we have a quorum. Two of our members walked out.
Oh, my. Are you recessing now?
I apologize. Pardon me?
No, she asked if we were recessing.
No, no, we're just, they just went out to get.
We kind of have to recess if we're going.
Yeah, they're coming, they're right out in the hall, they're coming back in, hopefully. Yep, that's okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for coming back in. Now, I'm sorry, Madam, I'm sorry. Councilwoman, do you want to make your motion now?
Do we have a quorum?
We do.
It's hard for me, when you're on Zoom, you can't really see.
Yeah, no, I know, it's difficult, I know.
I apologize. So, absolutely, motion to hold one week.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's held for one week. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Bill 1363, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Accept a Donation from King Street Production in the Amount of $5,000 for the Emmett Recreation Center and Pool Art Mural.
Have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, Councilwoman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I'm sorry, any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Invoices.
Okay, sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the invoices? In a second?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Strasburger, discussion?
Thank you. I did have a question about why we would need to put into invoices, maybe this is something that I think we discussed a couple of weeks ago, but maybe it was slightly different. Materials needed for catch basins.
Materials.
Did we cover this already? Materials needed for catch basins under DOMI's budget for a Foligno construction. I do recall discussing this a few weeks ago. If I could just get a reminder of why that's in invoices and not as part of the contract. Are we working to fix the contract?
Yes, please, we have our Budget Director, our Council Budget Director come to the table, please.
Apologies, I have vague memories of discussing this, but not the specifics, and I want to address it again.
Peter McDevitt, City Council Budget Director, this is a good question. This, so, we have Foligno under a contract, but not all of the materials that DOMI needs for their projects is covered under the contract, so whenever that contract needs to be renewed, they will update it to put all of these materials on there, but for now, they just need to do it via invoice.
Until then, it's going to, do you know how long that's going to be?
We could work with procurement to find out whenever that contract is up for renewal to then add those, but.
So I can stop asking every week? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're good? Okay, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?[1756.53] Any opposed? Any abstention? Invoices are approved. Thank you, Director. And what else do we have?
Venture Department.
And now we have interdepartmental. I can't find it. Enter, we have interdepartmental, uh, transfers. We have a motion to approve.
Approve.
Thank you, Councilman. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? They're approved. And now P. Card appro, P. Card approvals? Motion to approve?
Approve.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second discussion.
Second, thank you. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Just, Councilman?
Yeah, there's an item in here for herbicides for weed control. I thought we weren't, I thought it was like in the code or something, we don't. We don't, um, use herbicides.
Does it say it's for herbicides or just weed control?
It says herbicides for weed control, 4,200.
Good catch. Um, do either of you know?
Also, I'm curious to know what a FEAR ticket is?
What is it?
I don't know, the line item below it says melon, melon tennis, FEAR ticket fees. I don't really care about that, but it just sounds weird. FEAR ticket.
F-A-I-R.
I know, like fear.
Oh, fear, like scared.
A scare ticket. It's a scary ticket. Uh, I, I don't know what to do about the herbicide one.
I think it's just the company.
Scary tennis. Yeah, so the herbicide one, I don't know, it would be, it would be good to get clarification on that, because I've, it seems like it's some, it's definitely something happened before I was on council, but.
Okay, let's hold those until the end of the meeting, we'll see if we can get somebody here to discuss, okay? So, uh, could we make sure, can you tell, ask your staff to get somebody here to discuss?
For the invoices, I mean, for the P. Cards.
For the P., yeah, P. Cards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on to our, if you don't mind, we'll move on to our, we'll leave that open, and we'll move on to the next bill, uh, next committee. And that moves us to Councilman Kraus, Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, Councilman, or Madam Clerk?
Bill 1396, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the City Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regularized Rights and Actions by Adding a New Chapter 610, Entitled Prohibition on Use of Certain Bags and Checkout Bag Charge, to Permit the Use of Only Certain Bags by Retail Establishments at the Point of Sale or for a Delivery, and Establishing a Charge Payable by the Customer to the Establishment for the Provision of Other Types of Bags, all under Certain Terms and Conditions.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam President. So I had the opportunity to have discussion with Councilwoman, uh, Strasburgers this morning on the changes that this bill provides. I just want to take a, an opportunity to thank her for her diligence and her work on this, this, uh, is very near and dear to my heart, uh, as well, uh, and I am very, very much looking forward to the day that, uh, that this is actually implemented and we can begin the, uh, the much-needed journey, uh, to eliminate, uh, uh, single-use plastic waste, uh, or another step towards reducing single-use plastic waste here in the city of Pittsburgh. So with that, I'm going to defer, Madam President, if I may, to Councilwoman Strasburger for her comments.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilman Kraus, for your leadership here, too. I know you've been working on this for a long, long time. I, um, wanted to just, uh, make sure that everyone knew that this is, this is a large amendment in one way, but, but not in other ways. It's not a rewrite of the bill. It simply changes the bill so that the implementation date moves from this month to October, so it pushes it back six months. There are some other technical changes here that allow us to, um, say, you know, provide post, postings in businesses 90 days prior to implementation, rather than 90 days after passage, which allows us to follow our own law a little bit more closely, and what this really does is give business owners and residents of the city of Pittsburgh, um, by virtue of us having the staff at the city of Pittsburgh to be able to go out and educate and inform, um, ahead of time, so everyone's really ready for this to take place, because, um, right now, I think there are some businesses who have, you know, started, you know, have stopped ordering, uh, single-use plastic bags to, to hand out with people's purchases, but others really aren't ready yet, so we want to make sure that we have the ability to fully educate and be, be, um, inclusive and thoughtful about the, the people and the communities that we engage, um, as, as we ramp up to, uh, effective date in October. So, um, really looking forward to working with our partners at, um, you know, city parks, and so we can be educating people at rec centers and senior centers and pools and all of that, uh, through our summer camps. And, um, thanks very much to Public Works for their partnership, as well as Law Department and our, uh, our council solicitor, um, for sort of flagging the need to, to make this change, and, um, uh, certainly my chief of staff, Scott McMurtry, who's been doing yeoman's work on this as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing, what's your motion? Is it to approve? Okay. Okay, we had a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bill is affirmatively recommended. Thank you.
Bill 1397, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to amend and renew the lease agreement with Beaver Avenue Associates, LLC, to continue providing a leased space at 1301 Beaver Avenue for the purposes of housing the Facilities Maintenance Division of the Department of Public Works for a total cost not to exceed $716,401.42, or a five-year period with utilities costs included, and an option to terminate without penalty between the three through five-year period if necessary.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman?
Thanks, Madam President. Uh, can you assist me, is someone in chambers to speak to the bill?
Um.
It's supposed to, it's supposed to be Director Hornstein, I don't know if he's online?
I, I think Director Hornstein may be away. I think we got notification that someone will be acting in his, in his absence, I think. I could be wrong.
Okay.
Uh, could we, this is just quite an expenditure, 700-plus thousand for renewal of a lease to rent space, just would like, uh, to have someone from the administration of Public Works come to speak counsel about, about it. Could we hold this bill open, Madam President?
Yes.
And then if no one comes, maybe we'll just hold it for a week, so I can get, uh, good, uh, good answers for my colleagues up here.
Yes, and, um, Madam Clerk just mentioned that, um, she believes Marcel Newman is either...
Is she acting right now?
She's acting, yeah, so.
Is she?
We'll, we'll have somebody try to notify her to get her up here.
Yeah, that would be great, and if she can, I have a real good relationship with Marcel, I'll be happy to reach out to her and, and brief members.
Okay.
If it becomes necessary.
Okay.
So for now, can we hold it open, please?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And the next, we have new papers?
Bill 1351, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Norfolk Southern for Costs Associated with the Repairs to the South Negley Avenue Bridge, where the city will be responsible for certain aspects of the work as described in Exhibit B for reimbursement to Norfolk Southern thereof not to exceed a total cost of $21,868.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is affirmatively recommended.
Bill 1352, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering, Final Design, and Utility Phases of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $9,270,00, an Increase of $190,000 from the Previously Executed Agreement, reimbursable at 80%, and the Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurr Costs Not to Exceed $47,000, a zero-dollar increase from the Previously Executed Agreement.
Uh, motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second, please.
Second.
Any just, Councilman?
Uh, Madam Clerk, I saw you stumble over that number two. Uh, I have an amendment to offer up. If you look, uh, at the text, uh, we have one extra zero in there, uh, that does not need to be there, and I appreciate that Peter brought this to my attention, so I am going to offer up just a brief technical amendment on the bill and then have a brief discussion. So a motion to amend, please.
Second.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Councilman?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill's amended, Councilman?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I think the Smithfield Street Bridge is the most magnificent bridge in the city of bridges.
That's because we meet there, our districts.
Yeah, we do, that's right, exactly, yeah.
You have half, I have half.
I just absolutely love that bridge, and I marvel at the, uh, at the character of that bridge. It truly is stunning, and I'm just so very excited to once again see, the bridge was rehabilitated, uh, I want to say, early to mid-eighties, uh, and it was, it was absolutely beautiful, and it, it's clearly showing its wear and tear, and I'm, I'm just terribly excited to see that this project is happening, and just, uh, wanted to put that on the record. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, and I, I love that bridge, too, and it was actually you who told me that that's where our districts meet, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is affirmatively recommended.
Bill 13...
We'll move, okay, I'm sorry. Is it Land Juice now?
Okay. Bill 1353, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Study Phase of the Beaver Avenue Esplanade Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $250,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve, please.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill is affirmatively recommended. And now we'll move on to Land Juice and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the chair, we have one, we have a, two deferred papers.
Bill Number 2022...
Together? Can we read them together, Madam Clerk?
Bill 2022, 270, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title VII, Business Licensing, Article 10, Rental of Residential Housing by Creating a New Chapter 783, Short-Term Rental Permit Program, and Bill Number 2022, 465, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V, Traffic, Article 7, Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program, 549.08, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate their issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals through the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion?
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Second. Councilman?
So in the light of the, uh, ruling at the Commonwealth Court regarding rental registry, and, uh, we're looking forward to, you know, seeing that, that process take place from, from there on out, and, uh, with that, these two bills, uh, I'd like to, I'm going to make a motion to hold for three months, because we're going to have to go back to the drawing table on some of those. So, motion to hold three months.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, briefly, Madam President.
I'm sorry, what'd he say?
I don't know.
In that place, just briefly.
Oh, yes, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I don't even know where to begin. I'm, I'm just, I'm so very disheartened, uh, about the, the bumps in the road that we've met over somehow 14 years to get rental registry in place, and I know there's not a member at the table that isn't, uh, constantly, um, barraged by constituency about less-than-contributing rental properties, uh, you know, for those that are, that are listening, the third council district has far exceeded the 50% in rental market. I would argue we're probably closer to 60 to 65% of this entire council district that is rental property largely held by LLCs, uh, that, uh, are out of state, uh, but, um, I mean, uh, I, I understand, I understand the limitations, that I don't have to dispersion on any of our solicitors for registry advice, uh, but it's, it's just, it really is the Realtors Association that, uh, that complicates and, uh, does everything in their power to limit us from being able to enact this ordinance, and I just think it is such a great disservice to the constituency that we serve, um, and, uh, and to the people that often live in subpar housing, uh, because we don't have the opportunity to go in and inspect, and, you know, between Councilwoman Strasburg and myself, Councilwoman Lavelle, representing Oakland, you know, we are, we are often inundated with, uh, uh, you know, not just the, the rental property itself, but the condition of the rental property and the conditions that, that many of our constituencies are, are living in because of perhaps less-than-contributing landlords that don't really care about keeping their property self-to-come, so, I just, uh, I don't know, probably at the point of rambling, I just, I just had to put my very, very, uh, disheartened comments on the, on the record and, uh, and, and why it's just been so very, very difficult for, um, the, uh, the, the courts to understand the importance of rental registry and what it brings to our constituency, and I'm just so very disheartened that, uh, that once again, we've hit another roadblock. So, thank you for, for letting me try to put my, my thoughts into words.
No, I, I know you worked really hard on this. Thank you, Councilman, and Councilwoman Morburg?
Uh, yeah, just in, with regards to the rental registry legislation, the Realtors Association, I do want to point out that there, you know, in addition to the lawsuits, um, there's a, a lot of misinformation that's also being spread among, because in Pittsburgh, we do have, in addition to LLCs, we do have a number of small landlords, right, folks, and this is in every district, right, folks who own two, three, four, five units, and, um, the messaging that, that is being, the, the misinformation that is being given to those folks about what this rental registry is, is really, I, I think, unconscionable. Um, this notion that it's some kind of slippery slope to making it so that you can't, you know, you won't be able to afford to do this and that, it's not, right? This is, it's essentially the same as, you know, a health inspection on a restaurant, right? It's just about, if, if, if your unit is, is clean and well-maintained and, and a, a, a decent unit, then this is not going to be an issue, right? This is, fighting, fighting this registry is, um, is a fight to protect folks that are, you know, that, that have units and entire buildings, honestly, that are really just in deplorable conditions, the people who leaving their yards and, you know, that, that are, that are ma, that are operating buildings and rental units that are, that are making, that are lowering, lowering property values in your neighborhood and, and creating unsafe environments for tenants, and, and that's what this, that's what the city is trying to do by creating a rental registry, is to make sure that we reduce those, those types of issues in our neighborhoods. So, it's not like a getcha for, for small landlords, right? If you have a nice unit, this is not going to impact you negatively.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further comments? I'm just going to add that I, I sometimes think this is where, you're right, we have some really good landlords in the city, and we have some people that really want to be a part of what we do, and to help us make this a great city, and for those people, I think we should be offering incentives to obtain some of the additional housing that we have sitting around, but, um, I'm not going to say much more, because I know that there's a lot going on with this, and, um, I'm going to follow Councilman Wilson's leadership on this, and I'll, I'll just ask for, um, all in favor of the holding for how many weeks? Or how long?
Three months.
Three months, I'm sorry, three months. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's held for three months. Thank you, Councilman.
Bill thirteen seventy-two, resolution further amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen seventy-three, resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen seventy-four, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by amending various public service grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended. And we'll move on to the Committee for Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee. Councilwoman Strasberger is the chair.
Bill number thirteen sixty-four, resolution providing for an agreement or agreement, leases and/or license agreements for the use of certain property for senior facilities for the provision of certain, of center services to seniors in an amount not to exceed $15,200, chargeable to and payable from the seniors' community trust fund and the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen sixty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement for the Cinema in the Park Summer Film Series.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen sixty-six, resolution authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a community partner access agreement or agreements with the Macedonia Church of Pittsburgh at a cost for use of the Ammon Community Center in order to provide a teen enrichment program to meet once a month on the third Sunday of the month starting in April of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively, thank you, Councilman. The bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen sixty-seven, resolution amending Resolution Number 662 of 2020, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Special Events to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc., to provide management services for the Richard S. Caliguri City of Pittsburgh Great Race in order to extend the term of the agreement through 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen sixty-eight, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into agreements at individual amounts of $10,000 or less with performers, instructors, artists, referees, and persons with specialized skills in connection with the department's recreational and instructional programs and special event services.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you. I, I am going to make a motion to hold for one week. We fully support the reimbursement and the paying of instructors and performers and artist referees this summer. And there's been a lot of conversation, Councilman Kraus and I have been in discussion, I've been in conversation with Director Pollak and, and Director Vargas, and a great discussion just, just now with, with Beth. And I, I think there are still some questions that remain around the source of funding and opening up sort of larger conversation around the source of funding for this and maybe potentially some other expenditures. So, wanted to have that conversation before final vote next week.
Thank you, Council. So, the motion is?
Uh, motion to hold one week.
Motion to hold one week. Do we have a second? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The bill is held for one week. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Bill thirteen sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Port Authority of Allegheny County in an amount not to exceed $10,483 for transportation services provided for the 2022 City of Pittsburgh Richard S. Caliguri Great Race on September 25, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen seventy, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into sponsorship agreements for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended. We'll move on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee. Councilwoman Warwick is the chair.
Bill thirteen seventy-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of PGH Lab and further authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab.
Councilwoman?
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
So, this, this is just, it, it's a program where third parties, if they have tech products that, that would be appropriate for public service use, that, that they can test those products with us, with the city. So, that's, is that about, yeah, so that's it.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any further assistance? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended. Thank you. And thank you, Director, for being down here. And that moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee. Ms. Gross, Ms. Councilwoman Gross is the chair.
Bill eleven seventy-three, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for proposed land development located at 4554 through 4564 Penn Avenue at Parcels Number 49M121, 49M122, 49M123, 49M124, 49M125, 49M126.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman?
Second. And I, I thank counsel for their patience with this bill. This is the one that I held, I think, four weeks last time because it is nowhere near any of its approvals, zoning, planning, et cetera. And so, it should, the sewer module should not have been on the agenda. So, we're tracking it and I'll just motion to hold for another four weeks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The bill's held for four weeks. Thank you, Councilwoman. And we have new papers.
Bill thirteen forty-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Miller School Residences LLC, Miller School Residences, 335 Miller Street, Third Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended.
Bill thirteen fifty, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 2932 Wiley Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill's affirmatively recommended. And that's, that's the end of our agenda for today. We're going to.
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
I apologize. We still have Bill thirteen ninety-seven open under the Public Works Committee.
We, thank you for reminding me. We also have, Marcel is here, Director Newman.
Oh, is she here?
Yeah, she came in. You have to come that way, I think. Yeah. And then we also have the P cards still open. Do we have anybody here for the P cards?
She can answer that.
Okay. Oh, she can answer.
You've been here a thousand times.
Councilman Kraus, do you mind if we take the P cards first?
Of course.
Okay. Do you want to do the P cards, Councilman?
Hi, Director. I just had a, morning. I just had a, yeah. We just got it right under the wire here at 11:45. So, I just had a question about the herbicides. And I think it'd just be good for the public to hear what the, you know, when we use herbicides and when we don't. Because I know my office, you know, especially around this time of the year, it's going to, we're going to get, you know, some calls about whether we can use it or whether we, you know, someone's suspecting that we are using it. So, could you go over what this particular purchase will be for?
Sure. This is a purchase for herbicides. Public Works General's policy is not to use herbicide whenever possible, particularly in parks. However, we do need it in certain instances. For the Third Division, they're asking to control some weed along sidewalks and certain intersections where the weeds grow so high that it makes it hard to visibly see uncommon traffic. So, that's, that's what the Third Division will use it for. But generally, we do, we do stay away from herbicides. Unless it's, you know, like certain areas, like I said, sidewalks, right-ofways, where they're all blocking street trees or the intersections. There may be other instances where we work with the State Forestry Department. If we have to inoculate certain trees, we will need to, you know, inoculate accordingly. But that's a program done with the state office.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for explaining that. Councilman Kalkiel?
Thank you for being here. So, as you mentioned, I have a lot of corners that, you know, grow six feet high. And you can't see. I mean, it's really dangerous. The herbicides, do we wait until the weeds grow and to spray? Is that right?
That's how we're, I'm not really sure how we're supposed to, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, so once they get to height, then we spray. We don't pre-spray and that doesn't just go. But the, the benefit is it's much more effective. It's.
And it lasts longer.
Right, right. Okay, yeah. I mean, it really is a public safety issue in many places. So, so just limited to that, obviously, in parks where kids are playing. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gross, go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, please.
I didn't hear anyone talk about specific kinds of herbicides and pesticides. And we know that the glyphosate is one that parents especially have had special concerns about. Can you, maybe you don't have them in front of you, but can you also send us more details about the specific purchase?
This specific purchase is for the stronger, I'm not really sure what the scientific name of it is, but it really is to control weeds, the overgrowth of weeds. I can get you that information. I don't have it.
Yeah, I am a little concerned about what I'm hearing, right? So, our goal is to use no insecticides or besides dangerous chemicals. There's, you know, I kind of, again, looked it up online while the bill was kind of waiting to be discussed. And we've made big announcements as a city about how we're trying to be biophilic and restore our habitats and not use insecticides and herbicides. Of course, we want to control weeds, but there are weeds and then there are weeds. So, knotweed and invasive species that's destroying our hillsides, causing landsides, possibly damaging trees, the invasive vines that actually kill trees that then fall and topple over. Those are one category. But then there are weeds that are literally just kind of like our natural grasses and flowers that we could just mow, especially on areas that are near sightlines for intersections and things like that. So, I would, you know, this is actually just a reimbursement, right? This, this money, this purchase has already been made because it's un invoicing. So, you know, I won't vote no on it since the city's actually already made the purchase. And it's a small amount. But I am concerned about where it's being used and on for what kinds of weed that's being used and what chemical is being purchased here. So, if we could, you know, those details should be available to us. So, I don't expect you to have them right this minute, but I would like to see anything from DPW about what, what, what they're doing where to see if there's some kind of informal policy that has changed since we've discussed it publicly, right? I mean, sometimes policies just don't get enforced or administered. And I'm a little concerned that we not use more chemicals in inappropriate places or where we don't need them.
Sure.
Is that something we can get from DPW? It's hard for me, if you're giving any facial expressions or doing anything, I can't see them. So, if you could say something into the microphone.
She responded, Councilwoman. She said, sure.
I hear you. I will get you.
I apologize.
No worries. I will, I will get you that information. I want to assure you.
Thank you, Director.
That we're not using it in parks, that unless it's with the State Forestry. But we, we will be using it along dangerous intersections and sidewalks.
Again, I would like more detail.
Sure.
About what kinds of weeds and where those locations are.
Yes.
And again, there's weeds and then there's weeds. And also exactly what this chemical is because we, we can't see that from, there's no detail at all on any place.
Okay. I will get it for you.
Thank you. Anything else from any other members?
Yeah, Madam President, ma'am?
Yeah, Councilman Kraus and then Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Marcel.
He sounds beautiful.
Good morning, Councilman.
It's the period. Could everybody clarify for those of us that are sixty-nine and becoming our adherent? But it's very good to see you, Marcel. So, you know, I would probably not have entered this conversation, but now I really can't help but. One of the streets that we do use this technique on, if you will, is Eighteenth Street. And, and I sort of dread that every, every time weed season comes and the weeds along Eighteenth Street that bend are, you know, six feet high, they do jut out into the road and they do create a hazard. But going by to spray them, then they just become these six-foot-long brown dead things that are sort of hanging off the hillside and they're really unseemly. And then just to sort of reinforce Councilwoman Gross's comments and just our concern about using herbicides and pesticides. And I remember having a conversation with then-Councilman McCarthy, and this had to be at least twenty, twenty-five years ago. And the Councilman saying to me, oh my God, it's weed season. And I thought, wow, what's weed season? Having been here sixteen years now, I fully comprehend what weed season is and, you know, how invasive it really is. So, maybe since we're entering into weed season, maybe we could have a broader conversation about how to perhaps deal with them a little bit more effectively through mowing and cutting as opposed to using herbicides or pesticides. And that's just, I just wanted to put those comments on the record. But Marcel, thank you for being here for Bill, I believe it is thirteen ninety-seven. I have to go back to my agenda here. Thirteen.
Councilman, we're going to vote the P cards, but Councilman Wilson has.
Oh, okay.
Further comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then I'll relinquish the floor for now. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
I was just going to ask if this is done in coordination with DOMA?
Uh, no.
Okay. It's not in my, it's not my division, so I'll, you know, anyway.
Oh, of course, you know, if they send us requests, we will.
If it comes to the First Division, a request like that, can we, can you notify me of, you know, of a dangerous intersection that's blocked by.
Sure.
High weeds?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All in favor, Councilman Kalkiel?
Just one quick thing. You know, I kept waiting for Councilwoman Gross to bring up goats. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of it as well. So, but I guess.
You're a comfort.
Yeah, well, I was waiting for you to chime in. But I guess, you know, with the goats, they require, I believe, like electrical fencing and things like that. So, certain areas, obviously, we can't just put two goats at anywhere. But, but, but I just didn't want it to go on set and promote Councilwoman Gross's goat, you know.
They have to have two fencing, the electrical and then a warning fencer.
Sure.
First.
Thank you. Anything else from members? All in favor?
Aye.
P cards, any opposed? Any abstentions? P cards are approved. Thank you for being here. Stay here, we have one more bill under Councilman Kraus's committee. We're going back to Bill thirteen ninety-seven.
Yeah. Hi, Marcel, again, are you familiar with the bill? Or should we read it again? Or are you already prepared to make comments?
I, I am not familiar with the bill.
So, Madam, would you mind reading the bill again?
Bill thirteen ninety-seven?
Yes, please.
Wait one second, I have to find it.
Bill 1397, resolution authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to amend and renew the lease agreement with Beaver Avenue Associates LLC to continue providing a leased space at 1301 Beaver Avenue for the purposes of housing the facilities maintenance division of the Department of Public Works for the total cost not to exceed $716,401.42 over a five-year period with utilities costs included, and an option to terminate without penalty between a three- through five-year period if necessary.
Thanks, Madam. So, Marcel, I'm not here to put you on the spot, I just thought that was a rather large expenditure that we really should discuss before approving. We're probably talking about 120-ish thousand a year to, to rent that space over a five-year period.
I was not prepared to discuss it, sorry about that. I.
No, 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 not at all. I would be more than happy to hold for a week if that's okay with my colleagues, and, and I'll be happy to meet with you, Marcel, and we could dig deeper and have a better understanding, bring back to council.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to hold, Councilman?
Yes, please. Motion to hold one week, please.
In a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Bill's held for one week.
Thanks, Marcel.
Thank you, Councilman, for leading us on that.
Thank you.
And that exhausts our agenda for today, and I'm just going to make a few meeting This Friday, April 7, council and clerk offices, city clerk's offices will be closed in observance of the Good Friday holiday. Next week, council will hold the regular standing committees meeting on, both on Tuesday, April 11, and Wednesday, April 12, at 10:00 a.m., respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And I just want to say to those observing Passover this evening to have a happy Passover and a happy Easter to those who celebrate Easter. Anything from members? With that said, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll pick up our recessed meeting, we'll reconvene our recessed meeting, and vote on the police contract. Thank you. Can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you, everyone. Just go right into our.
We'll stand this table for the recess.
Yeah, can we stay here for the recess meeting? Do you guys care?
Yes.
I'm not going up there.
We're just voting on that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Is that okay? It's up to you.
Whatever you guys want.
Well, they, they either watch our meetings upstairs, or you stay here.
Yesterday.
They watch on Tuesday, right? So, you can leave if you want. Thank you, nice to meet you, thank you for being here.
Preliminary, we did.
Okay, we have a motion to reconvene our recessed meeting.
Alex.
You ready? We're good. Can we have a motion to re, to reconvene our recessed meeting?
So moved.
A regular meeting?
So moved.
Second, okay, on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. And our next order of business is reports to committee for final action, and I'll begin with Councilman Lovell, Committee on Finance and Law, and myself for Councilman Lovell. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
I have one bill. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title?
Bill 1385, resolution ratifying the 2023 through 2025 Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One, Collective Bargaining Agreement.